Mr. Dames?
Thank you. I would like to thank the council for attending, and I also want to highlight staff that's worked on this as well. Ms. Lorenson and Mr. Fitzpatrick, had he still, he'd be getting some accolades for helping me put this together, as well as the staff that works on acquisition and disposition. That would be Kelly Niforth, Darlene Brant, and Andrea Flanagan. And we've tried to put together something that didn't exist until this was requested. So, we put a lot of work into the flow charts and putting together this policy, so you guys can take a look at that. And as we got into this project, we discovered that it's kind of an onion, and as you start peeling it back, there's more and more issues. So, we've tried to clear it up as much as possible and put it in a logical format. And you received the material back in July regarding the flow charts and the narrative that accompanies those flow charts. I have the flow charts on this, and I also have some other exhibits that we've been working on over the last few weeks that help explain what we're talking about, and I can launch right into that if you're ready.
So, just a clarification then.
Yes.
So, this is as it is now, as we do it. This is not necessarily recommendations.
Well, there's one recommendation, and there's five that are existing.
Okay.
And the first one, the first flow chart is the residential, and the second flow chart is for commercial or non-residential properties. And I'm going to launch into the residential properties. That's this flow chart right here. And as we got into this, we had to really divide it into three different kinds of flow charts depending on the funding source, because each funding source has different rules that we have to follow when it comes to the acquisition and disposition of the property. The first column here is the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Program. The middle one is the Healthy Neighborhoods Program. That's our TIF funds that we've been using for rehabilitation. And this Capital Improvement Program is actually a new program that we've proposed that is modeled after what they do in Green Bay and La Crosse to acquire and demolish blighted properties to encourage additional infill residential development. So, I'm ready to start talking about these three, and then we'll transfer to the commercial. And then, lastly, we go through all the other charts. And just to give you a little perspective as to what the RDA owns, I got another chart right here. When we're talking about the residential, wrong mouse, Alan. These little pieces right here are these spot blights that the RDA has acquired properties. They're typically going to be properties that have major issues. The big pieces are part of redevelopment areas and redevelopment plans. So, this is the Marion Road area. This is the South Shore area. Here's Menominee Nation Arena that the RDA still owns. And this is up here at the corner of Sawyer and Oshkosh Ave where we're planning on that intersection redevelopment there at Oshkosh and Sawyer. But the rest of them, these dozen or so individual lots are single-family homes that we've acquired based on the spot blight determination that goes through RDA and council. That's one of the first things we do. We use block grant for many years to acquire and demolish properties. The block grant program, we start with the color coding. You can see redevelopment authority is in blue, common councils in green, and staff is in the purple. The redevelopment authority approves the acquisition based on determination of blight or properties within a redevelopment area, and that's what I was trying to highlight here on this map. There's three redevelopment areas and multiple spot blight locations scattered throughout the city. Common council would have to concur on that blight determination and approve the funding. And then, the disposition, following our past practice, we have to follow block grant rules. We have to sell it for a fair market value or LMI housing. The biggest problem is block grant funds cannot be used for new construction. So, all we can really do is acquire and demolish. And even with demolition, we try to limit block grant funds to only the tipping fees. Otherwise, you start creating all kinds of other federal requirements for the project. And then, once it is ready to be sold, it's either private sale to an adjacent property owner, again at fair market value, for residential construction. And certainly, if it's going to be sold, affordable housing is one of those criteria we can use as well. We do have partners in the past that we've talked about using these acquired properties with. Habitat for Humanity has acquired multiple sites around the city through the block grant program from the RDA, and is still in the market for additional sites as time has gone by. Advocap's taken one a few years ago in Middle Village. And lastly, GoHNI has talked about potentially building a new building, a new house on a vacant lot. They haven't pulled that trigger yet, but that's a possibility. Any of those sales would have to be approved by the RDA, and what's typical, we've required a design approval for the residential construction for that redevelopment site. Any questions on the block grant flow chart?
Just one simple question, and for the benefit of those watching and any new folks. So, there's statutory elements to blight definition, and then there's, like, in practice definition. How are we operating in terms of defining blight and criteria as it relates to blight?
Okay. Blight, we typically follow a combination of state code, and there's a long list of what a blighted property could be. It's not just the physical condition, but I would say nine times out of 10, we're talking physical condition. But you can also include other criteria, like inadequate plating, inadequate multiple ownerships, could be a blighting influence. So, it's not just the physical conditions. It can be legal, it could be financial, it could be surveyor problems, actually, could create the blighting conditions. When it comes to block grant, we do try to document the blighting influences that we've used. And I can say, like I said, nine times out of 10, and with block grant, probably 10 times out of 10, there's either orders on the house to get corrected, it's been partially burnt, it's partially demolished by the owner. There's a lot of circumstances, and it's become an ice door for the neighborhood. Frequently, they're actually proposed by the neighborhood to say, can you do something about this house, because it's become a blight on the neighborhood? And it's one of those things where it's a concern that the police, the fire department, code enforcement, that if you have one house that becomes a blighting influence on the neighborhood, it spreads. It's almost like a cancer on that block or that block face. So, we pay a lot of attention to what the neighbors are saying about blighted properties. And we do do that analysis. We'll do a walkthrough to see if it's salvageable or rehabbable before we actually demolish a property. And demolishing the property is a multi-phase process in that you have to go through asbestos or any other hazardous material. You've had to abate that, and then you have to demolish it. Sometimes city crews can do it, sometimes we have to hire that out for a contractor. And then, it has to go to the landfill, and we pay tipping fees for that, because they don't do that for free. And then, lastly, we can grade it and start cutting the grass, and we start cutting the grass and clearing the snow in the wintertime until we can sell that lot. So, it's all...
And many times, these properties are vacant and longstanding vacant, which leads to many of those conditions, right?
You are correct. I would say, since I've been here in the last 10 years, we've only purchased vacant properties for acquisition and demolition. Doesn't mean you can't acquire and relocate people, but we've only done the vacant versions with block grant, because there's all kinds of relocation requirements in those cases.
And right now, actually, Rental Housing Advisory Board has been reviewing, in conjunction with community development, a vacant building registry potential ordinance, right?
Yes.
And I guess the question for Lynn is, this kind of came up earlier too, is when there are those raise orders based on blighting influences, do we have a rough idea of what it costs in terms of staff time and court costs to actually get that raise order accomplished?
Let me look at that last... Oh. I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head, do you?
No, I do not, but I thought it was in the thousands.
Yeah, it's definitely in the thousands, but we do it with internal staff typically. So, we limit our costs a little bit, but you have filing fees, you have service fees, you have other costs that...
Direct costs. And then, there's the staff time, and we're talking hundreds of hours on a raised property if you count inspection time and attorney's time.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, let's keep it going. Healthy Neighborhoods Program, this is an area that is specifically permitted through state statute to encourage affordable housing. We've yet to actually use Healthy Neighborhoods funding to acquire and demolish since we've had block grant funds available, but this could be done. RDA, again, has to acquire the property and approves that or recommends that to common council. Common council would have to approve it. It follows the same process, but the conditions for sale are a little different. You can do new affordable house with Healthy Neighborhoods funds. You can subsidize new construction. We do not have the fair market value requirement that block grant does. And technically, there's really no income limit like LMI requirements are for block grant. So, we can still continue to sell that to private sale or partner, but when you have those different conditions, you can sell it to the adjacent properties to combine them with their lots. You can offer a mo to own program, which means if somebody would maintain it for X number of years, they could earn that lot. And then, lastly, we could sell it to a private owner for affordable residential construction. And then, we still have the same partners who could still do the same residential infill type projects that they've done in the past. RDA still would have to approve the sale price and the design approval. So, as you can see, the RDA starts the process, common council has to approve the acquisition and the funding for each project.
I had a question on the conditions for sale. One of the criterias is new affordable house. How's that based off of the market value in that neighborhood or average?
We've not done one yet, so the way I'm thinking it would work is that we look at what affordable, what houses are in that neighborhood and figure out some kind of affordability cap for that when it comes to what we would think an affordable house would be in that neighborhood. When you look at affordable housing in state statute, it's basically, is it the magic number, 30%? Has to be, goes towards their housing costs. So, in theory, somebody making $100,000, if they only spend $30,000 for their housing, it's in theory, an affordable house. I don't think that's what the intent is, but that's the rule of thumb, is about 30% would go towards the purchase of the either rehabbed or new house that could be built on that property.
Of their monthly payment.
Of their monthly payment, yep.
Okay.
That's the best we've gotten. There's no state guidelines. That's what we were just reading out of state statute. There's no administrative rules that accompany that, so that's our interpretation to date. And let me see, I might have a few other things to show you. Website marketing, when I talked about marketing, we do put these on the website in both Develop Oshkosh and Locate in Wisconsin. And we put signs up in the residential areas, basically the small residential signs. I'll come back to these signs when we get to that piece. And I'm gonna, I'm jumping forward to the Green Bay Neighborhood Enhancement Program. That's the third column, the Capital Improvement Program. And that's a program that we've heard other cities in Wisconsin have established, and as you see in Green Bay, they've been doing it since 1999. They actually put money in their Capital Improvement Program to acquire and demolish properties throughout their city. And to date, they've done 184 acquisitions. So, since I've been here, we've probably done about three a year, so somewhere around 30 acquisitions. So, they're on a much higher rate, a higher scale, and they've disposed of 119 of those since they started this program. And as you can see, they've allocated about $11 million over the last 18 years, so it's about a half a million dollars a year goes towards the acquisition, demolition, and some development incentives to help the reconstruction of affordable houses on those lots. And you can see, they have also spent money on other programs for conversion grants from multifamily to single-family, some neighborhood beautification programs, funding the maintenance and utilities for those vacant lots, and some administrative and marketing time. They've told us that there are other benefits, the private property investment. They usually go after the worst neighborhood property in the neighborhood to remove that and try to make it the best property in the neighborhood after you get new construction. And they've seen a reallocation of city resources with less police calls, inspection calls, and staff resources, and we've seen that even with just acquisition and demolition in the city. They recognize that you can develop HUD, HUD, you don't have the HUD restrictions that you do with the block grant program. And depending on the neighborhood or the needs, you can, it's a very flexible program, unlike CDBG, which is very rigid. Healthy Neighborhoods needs to focus on affordable housing, whereas the Capital Improvement Funds can go to just about anything that would be related to affordable housing or neighborhood And that would be the program that we don't have in Oshkosh right now.
So, we have the Healthy Neighborhoods Program, but we have not yet used that.
For acquisition, demolition.
Acquisition, demo. But then, the addition is the CIP Green Bay model.
Yes. We've, to date, we've used pushing a million dollars on sold on Oshkosh and the owner rehab program through the Healthy Neighborhoods Program, so it's getting more and more traction. We could use that money for acquisition, demolition, but it's one of those things where you're hoping to recover these costs and make it a revolving loan fund type of thing with the Healthy Neighborhoods, because that's from the closed TIFs, and we just don't have that many TIFs to close in the foreseeable future to replenish that money.
Is this the one where we have roughly, like, $2 million available?
Yep.
To do the Healthy Neighborhood, okay.
Yep. And this year, we're going to be using about a half a million dollars on the rehab program, and we're projecting it's, we're going to use even more next year, because the rehab program is getting a lot more response in the neighborhoods now. I think the neighborhood associations are helping, the real estate agents are helping, and GoHNI are helping get the word out, so...
And rock the block, right?
And rock the block, absolutely. And then, to finish the flow chart, it's a good thing you're sitting close, because I don't think your voice can project. Common council, so this would be a new flow chart that we kind of invented. It still follows the basic criteria. RDA first, common council has to concur, and then, there's no CDBG or Healthy Neighborhoods requirement, so you can put any kinds of conditions on there that the council would want to set. And I haven't laid those out, other than there's a few conditions that we've used at the RDA level that would have to be kind of elevated to a policy level for the council. But you could certainly sell to the adjacent owners, mo to own, sell to the private owner for residential construction. And in fact, up in Green Bay, not only do they sell it to the private owner for a dollar, they also give them a $25,000 grant to build the affordable house. So, based on acquisition, demolition, site prep costs, and the $25,000 grant, Green Bay is easily putting $50,000 to $100,000 into those redeveloped lots. So, that's kind of the target I'd be looking at for those affordable infill type projects.
And that's what the new, that's where they've come up with their new taxable value of the 8.8 million?
Yes. Yep.
So, they've spent $8 million, and then, they've got taxable value of $8 million, which is entirely different.
Correct.
Okay. All right, nice, okay.
And were all of those 184 acquisitions all at one time either blighted or spot blighted?
I wouldn't go so far as to say that. They were on the city's radar based on their location and their condition that I'm aware of, but I don't think they were actually designated blight, because they can just offer the owner X number of dollars to acquire it. They don't necessarily go through the RDA process to blight. They do have to go through a process to acquire it, and it all is acquired through their RDA. Since the RDA exists, the RDA is the body that is responsible for the acquisition of these types of properties in Oshkosh as well. So, there's where we are with the residential. As we, as I said, we were peeling the onion. We said, there's a lot more property in the city that we wanted to go through the process with, and the RDA is one of those actors again, and that would be the commercial and surplus land. That first column still includes the RDA, because with many of our redevelopment areas, it's not just single-family. It could be factories or old commercial. So, the RDA is established to acquire those properties as well, so that's why I'm calling it a commercial and surplus land acquisition/sale process. Again, we go through, common council approves a redevelopment plan or the spot blight designation, the RDA acquires the property. Here's where it's a little twist, in that sometimes the RDA land banks the property. I use South Shore as an example. We've slowly acquired properties on the South Shore that were either, number one, blighted or number two, split into so many little parcels or contaminated that we needed to acquire them under one redevelopment, because you couldn't redevelop these one little parcel at a time. And sometimes, they land bank it. The environmental assessment and remediation's always a big criteria, and we typically do demolish the buildings. There's been a few times where we've actually leased to people if the building was in good enough condition. 43 East 7th was leased a few years. One residential property is leased to Advocap for one of their properties. And the RDA also leases the bait shop up at Sawyer and Congress until we tear that down for the intersection. That building is not needed for the intersection at this point in time, and we had an existing tenant that wanted to stay. So, those three are, off the top of my head, different examples of when we've actually continued to lease. The RDA goes through a marketing process, and I got examples, again, on this screen. We've gone through, we put the for-sale signs up, we put, we list them all on the Develop Oshkosh and the state website for the free postings. And with some of the projects, we solicit RFPs, and we did that with the 43 East 7th just this last year. Little yellow triangle piece in the South Shore. And then, the RDA still approves the sale price and development agreement if they own the property. That would still go to city council for the development agreement, and sometimes TIF is involved, and sometimes Capital Improvement Program projects are involved. So, you can see, the RDA process is one of the more complicated flow charts that we use for disposing of, for selling city land. And then, an easier one is our industrial and business park land, and we've got industrial park land on the sheet, on the map behind you. Everything in the north industrial park has been sold. Everything in the northwest industrial park has technically been sold. We own the Boschwitz Farm, which is to the south, that is, right now, not developed. It could, we could extend sewer and water to it relatively easily, but that is available. The southwest industrial park is available. We've got a few lots left in TID 18, and this, on the north side of the tracks where the transload site, that's TID 23, that includes most of that purple on that side, so that's the other southwest industrial park. And then, we've got a few little parcels left along the drainage ditch on the aviation business park, and we own the east side of the aviation business park. So, that's our industrial inventory right now. And that does not go through the RDA. That goes to common council. I got a few little slides to show you on that. We do marketing with GoEDC. They've done industrial park flyers for every one of our industrial properties, and they provide those to interested parties. They do a marketing campaign with both at EAA for the aviation business park, all the site search that they do. They include all this material to New North, to WEDC, to local commercial brokers. All this material is made available to all them, as well as their contacts with individual property owners who may approach them directly. And I think, and they continue with the advertising with additional, here's one they did specifically for the transload terminal in the southwest industrial park, as well as one we have for the takeoff for the aviation business park. That was during EAA. Those cases, we get options or offers, and those go to council for approval or denial, and then, council approves a development agreement if needed. Sometimes, they're just outright purchases. Typically, they are. Sometimes, we get a development agreement that would come through industrial or business park land sales. And that, we've had quite a bit of an uptick since the last couple of years. We've sold, oh, I want to say, four or five parcels over the last two years, and we've got more in the pipeline, so that seems to be turning around. And then, the one that's most complicated that doesn't involve RDA is the other city-owned land acquisition and sales process. I apologize for the yellow, not really coming up very good, but on this one, the yellow is the boards and commissions that are involved. When we took a look at the land that's involved with city surplus land, it's odd little pieces, typically. I've got a little map here. This is the old sanitation garage. These are old railroad right-of-ways that are around the city. Here's a property we had to acquire as part of the Murdoch Roundabout, and a few other properties that I couldn't even tell you why we own the dog kennel, I think, over there on, by the treatment plant. So, we've got a scattering of our available surplus land in the city that would follow this process. Common council would have to approve the land acquisition, which we've already done in the past, since we already own that. Staff reviews these holdings periodically, and typically, it's the department that's involved. Public Works acquires properties, Parks Department, transportation, community development once in a while. Depending on the nature of their capital project, we end up with these properties. And then, can we recommend surplus or disposal of these properties? We're thinking this would go to the board that has responsibility. So, as an example, last night, we were at the Parks Advisory Parks Board talking about a little chunk on the south side at Keller. We thought we'd need to get their input before it goes to Plan Commission, who actually has to go through a land disposal process, and then, it goes through to council. And then, council is the final determinant as to whether it's surplus land. If they say no, then it gets put back in the pot, and we'll look at it again. If they say yes, then we can continue with marketing. We could transfer the property to another governmental entity, such as the state or county, if there's any potential right-of-way or needs that they would have, or we could go through an RFP process. That still comes back to the board and commission, and then, makes a recommendation to the common council. This is the, this is the one that we struggled with most, because there were all kinds of different, this was not written down in a nice flow chart form, but this is the best we could figure out what's been past practice and what we'd recommend should be the practice in the future.
I thought I was curious last night that the Parks Department was reviewing what to do with that small piece of property. Is that a new process? Because I don't know if I've recalled seeing Parks specifically in on things like that before.
It's the second time I've been to the Parks Board for something like that, and I can't really speak to others. I think they might have disposed of something on the south side of their building, they're off Witsel. I want to say, we disposed of some excess land to a neighbor for a garden area or something like that. So, I think periodically, it does happen. I can't say I've been to all of those types of meetings, but...
44 degree, 44 parallel park.
Yes, they disposed a little triangle piece to a neighbor as well, so...
This piece, the park didn't own, right?
Oh, yes. It was part of the, it was part of the original Lakeshore Golf Court, so that's why we felt it should go back to Parks.
And that little yellow box at the very bottom of that, Alan, what does that say?
That says, Plan Commission makes the final recommendation of disposal to the common council. So, in theory, it would go Parks Board, then... So in theory, it would go Parks Board, then Plan Commission, and then council. It could, since we don't have, we have Public Works or Transportation. Well, Transportation could take it maybe to the parking facility or something like that. Public Works Murdoch probably would go to just Plan Commission, since Public Works doesn't really have a board that would oversee that type of thing. Maybe the board of Public Works would have to make that call.
But normally, it would be Plan Commission.
Plan Commission, yes. And that was a lot of analysis as to what statutes say, what our past practice has been, and what we think could be the best practice to make it understandable to people. And when somebody asks us about the Murdoch property, we'd say, okay, this is the process we have to go through, because right now, we didn't have that, and we would need the council to say, this is the process we want you to use, so we can adequately respond to interested parties about those types of properties. And Parks Department gets those requests. Once in a while, we get something regarding those old railroad properties, because a lot of those go through residential neighborhoods. We'll probably do the same thing with the old sanitation garage, because that's on the agenda to be torn down, and we'll want to dispose of that property and sell it for redevelopment. So I'm thinking that's going to go through Plan Commission and Common Council as well, when we get to the point of being able to offer that.
So on the scattered sites that are not in a redevelopment area?
Mm-hmm.
That are, we've just acquired based on kind of opportunity, or we just hold them in the bank, and we now put signs on those vacant, they'll type either commercial or residential?
Yep.
But only, is it only commercial that go on the Develop Oshkosh in Wisconsin, or the residential?
I thought we put, I asked staff to attend.
RDA properties are on.
All of them, okay.
Yes.
The people who actually post them to the website should be able to answer that.
That's pretty interesting, what the Green Bay enhancement program is doing.
Yes, and when we went to other communities, I'd highlight La Crosse again, that's somewhere, a community that's similar to Oshkosh, that they've spent quite a bit of local funds to redevelop some of their older neighborhoods around the downtown, around some of those commercial cores, that you can see after five or 10 years has made a big difference, because they've acquired the worst properties, and now some of the nicest properties have replaced them. So it almost changes the face of that block. And then they also show that now there's private investors who are acquiring and upgrading those properties, as well as the existing property owners see what's going on, and now they think it's a good investment to upgrade their properties. So that's why I can't say enough about how nice it is to see La Crosse and Green Bay as good examples of how they've been able to turn around some of their neighborhoods, but they've had to invest more money than we've invested at this point in Oshkosh. And maybe the scales are different, because Oshkosh has a lot of neighborhoods that could probably use this. I wish we would have started 20 years ago like Green Bay did.
But they're putting in more per unit?
Yes. Green Bay is, I mean, as I tried to indicate, they're spending anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000, and they're getting houses that are meeting their design criteria, that are going to be built for $150,000 to $200,000. So it's raising the general average for the neighborhood, which is always good for comps, I'm told, for those neighborhoods as well.
Alan, do we sell a lot of these properties or work with Habitat or some of these other organizations?
We're our number one buyer.
Okay, good. That makes me happy.
Yep. Habitat, in fact, they, last week, they'd like to have an inventory, because they'd like to be able to show their potential clients different neighborhoods, and they'd like to have different lots available throughout the city for their client purposes.
Right. And I like their vetting process, too, so, yeah. That's awesome, thank you.
And I can say that they've done a very good job meeting our design criteria that we established, and probably my favoritest thing so far is that they've acquired properties that already have garages that we didn't tear down, so the garages were already there, because, that's a bonus, exactly.
Yeah. Nice job, thank you.
The idea behind this was to give council, it was one of the goals that council had set for me, but we went beyond it, because I think staff realized that there was more to it than just, just surplus properties, that there are so many different flavors of surplus property. But I think it gives you an idea, you know, I think other community groups like the Housing Authority could look at this and say, how can we fit in to, with probably even some commercial and surplus land? There's residential, potential residential uses even on this side of the sheet, right?
Yes, the redevelopment sites, especially, when I say commercial, it's maybe not single-family. Certainly, multifamily and mixed use could be used for any of those redevelopment sites.
Alan, to the Green Bay Neighborhood Initiative, are you thinking of putting a plan of action together to present to council on how we could get there?
Well, this is, this is my trial balloon. If you're interested in that, I could put that together and incorporate that into the capital improvement program, and we could talk about that during budget time this fall.
Yeah, because my thinking is, there are probably some areas in the city where it may make sense to buy more than one property here, one property there, and actually have that bank of property.
Yep.
And, you know, some of it's near commercial properties, and some is not near commercial properties. So it might be advantageous for us to take a look at that.
And to do so without the restrictions.
Right.
Correct. Of CDBG.
Right.
To have that flexibility to respond however we, as a council sees fit, or staff sees fit to propose, to respond.
Wouldn't we, before we would go that direction, use up what we do have that we haven't used on that Healthy Neighborhoods TIF money?
Well, my only reluctance there is that, right now, we're doing so many owner rehab projects with that, that if I take it for acquisition demolition, I'm not going to have the owner rehab projects, and that replenishes the fund. So that's kind of self-sustaining, if we do enough ownership, owner rehab projects. So that's why, since they've, over the years, they've cut the black grant, so we're doing fewer owner rehabs. That's our best replacement for owner rehab, and it is self-sustaining with a low interest rate, and we get that money back.
But couldn't we take like a portion of that to seed?
Absolutely.
The third option?
Yep, absolutely. We could, we could use some of that.
And it's a balancing act, you know, I think there is a place for that, but do you do so much, and then basically exhaust your funds, and that, the TIF monies that we have are still limited. You know, we got the big TIF number seven closed, but the future TIFs that are closing are not going to be as huge. They're very small, and there'll be incremental increases, but nothing, no big bump in there like you had with TIF seven.
I think it's a good plan, overall. I was one that was pushing it as a, as a goal, is to make sure we have a solid program to continue to purchase properties and to continue to market our industrial parks. And hopefully, when the county finally gets a runway in next year, that will help the aviation business park, because I know that there's some interest, but they're not interested until they can have a runway.
My understanding as well.
Taxiway, you mean?
Taxiway, taxiway. But it's been delayed a couple of years already on the county side, so it's kind of hurt the progress out there.
Well, staff put a lot of time into this, and I want to thank them, Alan, and Lynn, and support staff in community development, and I think John was riding her on this thing for quite a few months to keep it going, and Kelly with all the economic development aspects of it. So I want to thank the staff, a lot of good work.
The only thing that I would add that we had talked about is, we did build in some flexibility, so that if something different or, you know, came up, we could, we do reserve the right to deviate from the process, so that if the council says, hey, you know, this is a great opportunity, we don't want to follow our process, you do have that flexibility in there, too.
Good. That was part of the, kind of the manual that went along with the flow charts that you received in July.
So then will this come out in a more, I guess, formal?
I would expect it will. If council likes it, we can put it in a formal document that you guys can put on a council agenda to approve, and then council staff will implement it as you see fit.
So that would include probably some more data in terms of our current housing stock or our current commercial building stock in relation to what our forecasted needs are?
That's probably more than I was imagining right now. Let me think about that a little bit, because that's kind of a big ask, and I know I'm working.
That's in the comprehensive plan already.
That's in the comprehensive plan. We're also working with East Central on that housing report.
Exactly.
And that's going to be do, done by the end of the year, and they're doing some of that work for us to satisfy that, so I'm not sure I'll have it, all that information by October or November, but that piece could go in.
In with this. So maybe, Alan, if you just want to explain to the others what that is, we, it's kind of new, right?
It's brand new.
And it's very affordable, so you'll love that.
Yes. Let's see, backing up a little bit, the legislature said that municipalities over a certain size, I want to say 10,000, they have to look at their cost to develop housing, as well as what the fees they charge for that. And everybody in the valley has to do that, and we got together and said it makes no sense for all of us to do different types of projects. We asked East Central to see what they could do to do one thorough analysis of the entire region, so we can compare apples to apples between municipalities. And they said that they could do that and stay on the timeline, and they could get that done, I want to say for $1,300 or $1,400, and have it done by the end of this year, and that would include the costs of development of residential properties, which is one thing the council's been very interested in, as well as the fees that are charged. And we'll, this goes back about 15 years, where an East Central did a very similar study. They just haven't updated it, and now we're going to update it with 2019 numbers to give us a sense of where Oshkosh is compared to the rest of, at least the valley. And then as more people submit, finish their required reports, we can see how we compare throughout the state as well.
And that would maybe cost our staff how much to do?
Oh, I was afraid that was going to be halftime for half a year, off the top of my head, because I think when East Central, I thought it would be a $20,000 project. But they're going to do everybody for, I want to say somewhere around 30 or 35, depending on how many people participated. And it sounds like everybody except the city of Nina will be doing this. They're doing their own, and everybody else is joining in with East Central. So we'll have that report. And then that'll actually segue nicely into the subdivision ordinance update that we're working on as well, because we were looking at what kind of costs are required in our subdivision ordinance, and are there any alternatives that might work in Oshkosh?
Well, direction-wise, do you have direction to move forward? Did you see some, enough nodding heads to?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to bring the resolution and that to council immediately. They've done so much work here. I think we're ready to bring it to you within a month.
Thanks for building in the flexibility to.
Yes.
Yes.
Always need that.
God knows government gets in the way of itself all the time.
Yeah, we do.
Thanks for the detailed work.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's all we have, Madam Mayor.
Perfect timing.
Do we have Janet to thank for your voice?
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programs.